So it's six thirty. James is going to run over the greenhouse, he's not feeling well.
All right, so it's six thirty, we'll go ahead and stand up, say the pledge and give James a little time to get to the greenhouse and get live on Zoom. While we're giving James a few minutes to get over, today at four o'clock, we dedicated a tree out here in the park to Sue Powell for her two thousand nineteen municipal clerk of the year. We weren't able to honor it to this point because of COVID and all, but we had a big crowd today. She had clerks and constituents from all over North Carolina come in here to be part of it. And not to tell on her, but I think they're all out eating together tonight. If I was looking for Sue this evening, I'd go look at some of the restaurants. Okay. But Sue, and like I told Sue, I said, so you earned this years before two thousand nineteen, but it finally got around to you, and that's a good thing. She does it. She's done a great job with what she's had to work with over the years. Does the rest of council feel comfortable going ahead and improving the agenda? You want to make a change to it?
If it would please counsel, I would like to suggest a change on the regular agenda moving C up to A.
Is everybody okay with that? I know James was forty last night. Okay.
Thank you.
With that change, would you make a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I will make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Randy. I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? We'll let James, give him a few more minutes. Will we know when he's on? Can you tell?
Yeah, he'll, he'll log in. I'll get notifications. While we're waiting, Mr. Mayor, if I could, there, there were a few items on your table when you came in this evening. I just wanted to touch on those. One of those is the utility report from the city Hendersonville. And then you provide water services on portions of Mills River, so I just wanted you to go have a copy of that. There's an updated version of one of the requests for a smart start was on your table. There's a public comment that we'll read to the record in a few moments. And I believe there was one other item that escapes me at the moment. I just wanted you all to have that, to know what you're looking at.
We could probably go ahead and might get a motion for the consent agenda if nobody had any changes to that. It's just the minutes.
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thanks, Sandra. Second. Thank you, Randy. All in favor? While we've got a minute, I've got a couple signed up for a public comment. This would be separate from the nonprofit requests. If anyone else would like to sign up while we got a minute, we'll, I'll wait till James gets on board so he can hear all public comment.
So, Mr. Mayor, just a word of procedure this evening, since Mr. Cantrell will be joining us remotely. To be safe when motions and votes are taken, it should be done via roll call, one at a time.
Makes sense.
James, can you hear us okay?
Yes. Yes.
I think we're all set. Okay. We'll go ahead and move forward with public comment. I'm gonna start with Ms. Sherri Hill. If you'd step up the podium, give the ones that don't know you, your name and where you live.
In my notes. Well, good evening. I'm as going to seem that everyone on council knows who I am or should. But to introduce myself to those present or listening online who do not know me, my name is Sherri Hill, and I have been a resident of Mills River for twenty-two years. I have served as a member of the planning board since November of two thousand fourteen and as its chair since December of two thousand twenty. I'm here tonight to express my concern for changes being considered by this council to amend the process of reappointment to the planning board. For clarification, all members of the planning board are volunteers who have submitted an application to serve and have been appointed by the sitting town council at the time of a vacancy. Unlike members of town council who are elected, we receive no stipend to serve our town. Until two weeks ago, when a planning board member's two-year term was expiring, if that member had served consistently with no issues or history of unexcused absences, and if they desired to continue to serve, they would be reappointed. This council is discussing automatically putting them back in the pool of applicants and from there making a selection to fill the seat. At face value, this seems like a pretty good idea. But if you dig a little deeper, there are some reasons I am opposed to this change. Reason number one, there's a lot to learn when you become a member of the planning board. You have to learn what you legally can and cannot do. You have to learn to navigate the approximately two hundred page code of ordinances. You have to learn to occasionally say yes when your heart is saying no. You have to learn how to ask good questions that will provide a broader perspective. You have to learn how to accurately interpret the ordinance code, even when the interpretation is not popular. This being said, a change in the reappointment process could potentially cost the planning board decades of valuable experience and set us back while we wait for new members to get up to speed. I watch the town council meetings online, and I know you've sent some important items to the planning board to begin work on. And I just don't know if we can afford to lose that time and that experience. Reason number two, adding a planning board member in good standing back to the pool of applicants in spite of a proven track record is frankly insulting. If they were qualified at their initial appointment and they now have a minimum of two years' experience, what would cause them to become disqualified? This is not how you treat faithful volunteers, and I wouldn't blame anyone who chose to walk away. Reason number three, although our town website encourages citizens to apply for various volunteer boards, historically, the number of applicants has been low. If you add to this low inventory a particular area of expertise or a specific voting district, as suggested in your last meeting, the position quickly becomes pigeonholed. But honestly, I think you already know that. What this gives the appearance of is a not-so-subtle attempt to stack the planning board according to the desires of a new town council. Reason number four, consistency and equity should exist across all boards. Mr. Malacheck and Mr. Cobb have continually reiterated this concept. When council avoided a reappointment to the planning board at their April fourteenth meeting, it was mentioned that applications should be solicited due to low inventory. And three days later, a Facebook ad was posted by the town doing this very thing. However, just prior to this discussion on April fourteenth, an appointment to the agricultural advisory board was considered. There was only one application, and it was never proposed that additional applications should be solicited, nor was any Facebook ad posted advertising the vacancy. Consequently, the appointment was made. The appropriateness of this appointment aside, the spirit of consistency and equity was obliterated by this action. I take my role as a member of the Mills River Planning Board very seriously. I consider it an opportunity to support the citizens of our town and to help preserve the values that brought so many of us here in the first place. I work diligently to ensure fairness and equal voice to all parties who come before the board. I do not cater to those with deeper pockets, nor do I change the rules so people will like me. I do my very best to be prepared for every meeting, including driving to a piece of property I'm unfamiliar with or reading and rereading an ordinance to make sure I understand it. I may even spend hours researching an issue to gain better clarification. I know other members of the current planning board do the same. It is my sincere opinion that keeping seasoned, experienced members on the planning board whenever possible will ensure that we continue to move forward with the greatest efficiency and the greatest effectiveness. Thank you for your time.
Steven. Duty Baker?
This is in reference to one of the one five requests. Is this appropriate?
Well, if you won't do this, hold off when we get to that. I believe it'll fit better. I think we've got one that needs to be read into public comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. One moment.
Okay.
Yesterday evening, we received an email through the info@mill river dot org email address with a subject line, "Council Comment." This is from Jimmy Reese. "I would like to submit the following comments to be read at the next council meeting during the comment section. I moved to Mills River several years ago to provide live-in assistance for a friend. As time passes, I'm continually hearing more grumbling in the public, but I'm willing to voice those concerns to the people who can change them versus sit back and gossip. At the April fourteenth council meeting during the consent agenda, a reappointment to the planning board, planning committee was being discussed, and Councilman Jeffrey Young requested that the appointment be pulled out of the agenda so that the position could be advertised in order to receive more applications. He also wanted councils to look at adding qualifications for people appointed to the planning board. The council chose to postpone the planning reappointment because Mr. Young said, quote, "He felt that any opening should be advertised to the public to see if there is any, if there is other interest," end quote. Councilman Austin then specifically asked if this applied to all boards, such as the Ag Board, and Jeffrey Young answered, quote, "Yes, to be consistent." Council approved a motion to remove the planning appointment and advertise, but yet left the appointment for the opening to the Ag Board and the consent agenda. The appointment to council chose not, the appointment that council chose not to advertise involved the appointment of a council member's immediate family member. Coincidence? I think not. Since this council apparently doesn't practice or believe in transparency, I will do your duty for you. The council member whose father-in-law was appointed is Jeffrey Young, the same councilman who said that all positions should be advertised. I am not going to put this solely on the shoulders of Mr. Young, as the motion was made by Councilman Cantrell, and all of you voted for it, so you're all equally guilty. Do you think citizens want to be represented by such hypocrisy? Frankly, it is, it is an embarrassment and staying on the town of Mills River. I emailed the town this week to ask if there was any qualifications currently for serving on the planning board versus other boards, and specifically the Ag Board. I learned that the planning and adjustment boards require residency in Mills River. However, residency is not a requirement for appointment to the Ag Board, so a person who has no vested interest in Mills River can serve on these boards. That means one of two things. Either agriculture is dying and Mills River in, in Mills River in the town is having to look elsewhere to find people to serve in this committee, or council members don't have enough family members to fill the seats on the Ag Board. If you are so eager to put qualifications on boards, then I have a suggestion for you. How about changing the charter to put someone, council member, put some on council members before they can serve? The first one should be common sense, since that is currently lacking based upon the decisions being made. The second should be impartiality, although I would, I would have thought that that one would have been said during the oath, said during and the oath or being sworn in. Every citizen has the right to be elected with one requirement. They have to live in the town, and it's up to the voters to use their brains to vote. This doesn't always pan out, as we have seen on local, regional, state, and federal level. However, it doesn't change the process. Why shouldn't it be the same for people you appoint to boards? Why put qualifications on appointments when each applicant submits an application which council reviews and has sole authority and the responsibility for nominating the candidate? This was the message Mayor Gaunt was trying to convey to the rest of the council during that meeting, but no one wanted to discuss it. Councilman Austin was trying to achieve a commonality of equality and fairness for all boards at that meeting, but again, no one listened. By placing qualifications on impartial and educated manner, and therefore, the rules for qualifications need to be there. In this case, I might agree, so add one more qualification, that a member of any board may not be an immediate family member of a town council member. You won't add that, though, because that would actually be common sense, and you're all too afraid to be leaders and go against your friends and families. When you start your meetings, you are no longer representing yourself, your friends, or your families. You represent the entity that is the town of Mills River. At that point, you have no friends, no family, and you act in the interest of the government body for all people. This wouldn't have been an issue if council simply would have disclosed the relationship and advertised both positions. Therefore, you chose not to handle this the correct way and deserve to be called out for that. Apparently, the airport felt the need to call you on, call you out on your behavior and dealings with them as well. So maybe these types of situations will just become what you're known for. One thing I have learned since I moved to Mills River is that, as with most things, the rules of the town don't apply to council's friends and family members. I am sure Mr. Carlin is qualified to serve on the Ag Committee, and this is not a discussion about him, but rather the council's, the council's actions. You could have opened it up and put some, someone on the committee who was involved in the farmers market. Do better as a council, because when you take action, you represent all the presidents of Mills River. And to be honest, this was embarrassing and disgraceful. If it was an honest mistake, then I'm even more concerned that one of that magnitude was made to begin with. Maybe you should rethink your qualifications to serve, because apparently just wanting to serve isn't good enough anymore. Please show a little more professionalism. You are running a formal body of government. Jim Reese.
Thank you, Daniel. Do we have anybody else wanting to give public comment? Okay, here none. We will move on down to our regular agenda, which we have moved C up. So it'll be planning board vacancies. I know we've got a, several applications and even a reapplication.
You want nominations at this point, or you want to discuss?
I think we need to discuss. I'll be honest and say that the other day, you know, and I've told Sandra on the telephone, it, you know, it, I totally forgot about Wayne going through on the consent agenda earlier that day. You know, it never, you know, it was, the whole thing was kind of a shocker to me at that point. But I will say that it was discussed earlier on that they was gonna switch spots since he was coming off the Ag Committee, James was.
And to clarify on that, it was earlier in the year.
Yeah. Yes. Okay. All right, so let's talk.
Well, it's worth mentioning that not all boards are equal. The planning board and the BLA Board of Adjustment, they are part of our charter, they're part of our ordinance. And they perform a different service to this council than the other ones. Purely advisory, the others have higher responsibilities. And so I don't look at them as being equal. I still stand behind my statement that they all, there should be no automatic reappointments. And just as this current vacancy in the planning board has shown, we have six applicants, and a number of them have experience, years of experience in different fields, including real estate, business, finance, things of that nature, so I think we're doing a disservice to both the people of Mills River and this council. If we disregard those because somebody secured a slot, and it's their slot until they decide to give it up, I don't, in, in the staff notes or report that precedes some of the applications that were currently considered, it, it spells out, and I can pull it up and read it, but basically, it says that the boards are to provide expertise to this council. And that's what I'm looking for, is expertise. While willingness and eagerness to serve a town is a noble effort and should be commended, especially with the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board, like I said, those are a higher threshold, a higher bar, and sort of a whole new caveat of responsibilities, and therefore, we rely on them heavily for their expertise, and so I don't think we should be dismissive, and again, just hold spots for people just because they've been there and they've been dutiful in showing up, that if we're gonna be served as a council, we need to put in the best folks that will give us the expertise and advice that we need to make the decisions that serve the Mills River residents best.
I simply feel like, and Jeff, you were chairman of the planning board at one time, whenever I came on the planning board, and I served on the planning board for nine years. It takes a while to learn what you can, can't do on the planning board. It takes a while to learn that the code book that we have. And I think experience goes a tremendously long way on the planning board. Just looking at what's coming up here, there's three more seats that on the planning board that come up this, just this year. So theoretically, we could be replacing four people on the planning board this year. I don't think that does a service to the town at all. I feel like the experience of the planning board, I was lost for a year and a half of my first term on the planning board, just trying to learn everything. I, I think the experience goes a long way. Anybody that's a good member on the planning board that shows up to the meetings, participates in the meetings, and gives their opinions about how the code works and how we have our code written, I think, I think that's a good planning board. That's just, that's where I'm at.
Sandra, you got anything?
Well, experience does mean a whole lot in getting in and learning procedure laws and what you can and what you can't do. But I don't see anything wrong with resubmitting a current application or resume, as you will, and that experience and stuff can be put down on there and will be taken into consideration.
James, before I chime in, do you have anything?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you not hear me?
That's him sitting there, correct? James, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
He can hear us, but we can't hear him.
No audio from him. While they work on that, I'm just gonna say this. I've been on council, this will be thirteen years. And there's been a many a time we didn't have nobody to fill these seats, which out beating the bushes, trying to get somebody to come sign up to get us enough for quorums. I don't know that that'd be another problem, but it, it always could be. And you know, don't take this the wrong way, Jeff, but I don't have a college education. And I got many a phone call the other day from people that took it as when you was asking for professionalism and all, you was looking for maybe higher education or something, so you know, it hits a little funny there. You know, that guy was striving on common sense. We all have some, some have more than others. But, you know, who would ever thought when me and you was in school, I'd be mayor, you'd be sitting there, you know what I'm saying? But with that being, but with that being said, I'd like to get James' input on this, because he had some the other day.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Not reappointing planning board members is not specifically new. We did do that last year. You know, we did not automatically reappoint people, so it's not, I think it's a good thing to look at them every time. That's all I got for right now.
I guess I would ask that, from a councilperson's standpoint, if you was put in their shoes and you served, got many a year in, and you, would you reapply? If you had to go back in the pool, would you feel it's right to reapply? I don't know that I would if I was asked to reapply. I mean, I'm just, I don't think I would.
I don't think once you're on the board, you should be a lifetime member. I think, you know, that there's nothing wrong with resubmitting an application, and like I said, experience will be considered. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with reappointing them, but it doesn't hurt to keep a current application. You know, if they know they're coming up, they can go ahead and get it ready. And if it's the only one there, then it's a shoe-in. And but, you know, just have them there to look at and being on there does carry a lot of weight, and it's a very important job. And it is a volunteer job, and we do greatly appreciate it. And it's much needed, because Mills River's going through a lot right now. And it is a volunteer job and we do greatly appreciate it. And it's much needed because Mills River is going through a lot right now.
So with that being said, James, do you have anything else?
Um, no, I do wanna say that I, I did reach out to a lot of people and I came up with there was no applications turned in that I asked about. So I I did try and look at teachers and, you know, different people and, yeah, that, it's definitely not a um, popular thing to sign up for.
Wow. So then where does that put us with these uh? Uh, how many vacant seats do we have? Just the one right now?
Two.
You have two right now.
Two right now. So where are y'all at with uh, point? To those two seats. Anybody willing to make a nomination tonight?
If you're asking for nomination, I nominate Heath Wiggins, you know, on the plan board.
Which seat would that be for, before we, I call for a?
That's for the one that we did not appoint on the May fourth, or the April fourteenth.
Hey, can you help us out with the dates on that one?
That was for the term that expired April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
He's the one serving.
So I've got a nomination for Heath Wiggins for the April twelfth seat. Do I have a second? Oh, second. All in favor? So we got three.
Aye.
Four. So you want me to call, roll call vote?
Yes, please.
All right. Um, James, I don't know if you're aware, but we're roll calling votes tonight since you're uh, on Zoom. You're, uh, James?
Aye.
Sandra? Randy?
Uh.
I'm an I? Yep. No, okay. Or the one? Mr. Wiggins will be appointed to that seat. Anybody wanna nominate anybody for the second seat? That's open.
And just, just as a reminder, this is a resignation that created this vacancy. So the person that you appoint would fill it until August twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-three.
August twenty-sixth, okay. It'll be present till August twenty twenty-three.
And going through the applications, the one that stood out to me was John Abbott.
John Abbott? You making that a nomination?
I'll make that a nomination.
All right. Randy seconds, all in favor? Maybe a roll call vote? How about you, James? Mr. Abbott?
No.
Okay, Sandra?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. No. Three to two, Mr. Abbott. Will be nominated, correct? So he knows.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. All right, do we have any other uh, that was just on, we got any more discussion on this before we move on?
Mr. Mayor, I, just to move forward uh, with these, I'd like to either be uh, unambiguous about the council's approach to reappointments. Obviously, it's my desire to have all of them for this council be notified, you know, at least a month before the vacancy occurred or the end of a term expires. And then basically take the process that we did tonight where we review all applicants that are current as well as any new applicants that come in in that thirty day window and then take them into consideration. I don't know that that's a hard and fast rule now. Apparently, it's been a practice, put on a consent agenda and just move it on through without discussion or consideration.
So so where, so where are you at with the, you still want the appointee that's coming off to reapply with any new information? His old application stays on file, correct?
Two years.
For two years, even if he's sitting in a seat, correct?
Uh, no, I mean, the, yeah, the seat's been filled at that point. So okay, if, if, if we change it as you've often been discussing, then a simple reapplication would be required.
That's what you, that's, that would be your desire to say, remember, uh, reapply?
Yes, any position that a term expires, I like to consider all uh, eligible candidates for making an appointment.
I can't, I can't say it as strongly enough that I oppose doing reappointments that way. I think it's, if it's a good plan board member and they participate and they show up at meetings, it's an insult to make them to apply again.
Only thing I could ask is if you want that, you could have put it in a motion, I'll call for a vote and see if it has traction. I'm kind of with Randy, uh, this, you know, I've seen these boards not have members. I've been down that road and I'm afraid we're gonna run them off. I'm just telling you straight up, common sense. You're gonna get a phone call here in a few days and it's, they honestly though, they're, they're probably getting that people, they most of them will fill their seat out, but then we'll have to reappoint them then. Uh, is where I'm at, where I think I'm at with it. That's where I would be. I mean, I'd probably leave you tomorrow, honestly. But that might be what everybody wants. I don't know. That's what I would do. I would kind of fill out land. My mother. But I'm just speaking from my heart on this. If, and I'm gonna say this from a political standpoint, I think if if we have problems with these boards and the way they're conducting business or even in their thinking process, maybe we as a group or individually go to these meetings and talk to them. Just, just say, hey, you know, we need to start seeing eye to eye on this stuff. We, we need you guys bad, but it'll make all our lives easier. If when it comes back to council, if we can all be heads up on this game that we're playing and know where each other's at in the process. The I don't always agree with everything they do, but that's why they're there. I'll be honest with you. That's why they're there. But, but I'll give it back to you at this point, see if you wanna make a motion.
One thing is good, Ed was preparing to say something, now if you had a comment.
Well, I was gonna say, we get a four year term and then we have to run again. We're not automatically appointed back.
You're right, I think.
So.
We also pay. Where, where these are volunteers. Like I can only stress enough, but I've been here when we didn't have enough reforms at some time. It was earlier on. But we had just pushed stuff off. You gotta tell somebody needing a special use permit or something, like we ain't got enough planning board members to hear your case. It would be kind of funny.
The town advertised on the website for two weeks for applications, right?
Then that's correct. How many came in during the two weeks? We had, we had, I think we had one come in plus the reappoint, the reapplication.
We had one new application. And James said that he hit people up for two weeks trying to get them to apply. So I see that as a problem.
And I've been where James has been over the years. I've been there. Trying to get them.
Mr. Abbott was that applicant that came in during that window, correct?
That's right.
And he was now appointed to the planning board, so. Somebody that just came in last two weeks was worthy of putting one in this council. I don't think there's harm in opening it, but anyway. Um, there's other things that we can discuss. So no, I'm not gonna take temperature of this council on their app life or such a thing.
All right, so any, any more discussion about the planning board vacancies? Here and now, we'll move on to our original nonprofit Chris.
So Mr. Mayor and Council, each year, uh, the town uh, offers an opportunity for not local nonprofits to come and request funding of the town. This policy was adopted in two thousand seven. Um, and specifically the folks who are here to listen to this evening are what are considered five oh one C three organizations. Uh, those are different than the folks like the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development as well as uh, agribusiness Henderson County. Those are five oh one C sixes. It's a technical difference uh, that makes a difference in terms of how the funding is utilized. Um, so this year we've had uh, several uh, repeat requests as well as a couple of new ones. Um, so I'm just gonna run down for the, for the public kind of um, a little bit of the history of this. So again, this has been available since two thousand seven, this, this policy. Last year, the town funded both the Henderson County Partnership as well as Ag H C, the equal amounts of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, during the same time last year, when nonprofit requests were presented to council, uh, both Mills River Life and Richmond Center as well as the Farmers Market requested funding for the upcoming year. Uh, and the decision was made that evening to actually fund them. So in the current fiscal year, meaning what was approved last spring, the town um, provided ten thousand dollars to the Housing Assistance Corporation and eight thousand dollars for Smart Start Partnership for Children. Uh, again, the farm market and the, and Merlek were funded last year, but out of last year's budget, just to make that, that clear. Um, so requests this year, um, agribusiness H C, sixteen thousand five hundred slight increase. Henderson County Partnership is twenty thousand, which is also a slight increase. And they did not request a specific amount for the Economic Investment Fund, but in their letter of request, they did ask that the town contribute to that. Uh, and then we have the Mills River Farm Market, Mills River Life and Richmond Center, Mills River Partnership, Smart Start Partnership for Children and the Housing Assistance Corporation as well as the Blueberries Literacy Council. Um, so what we had planned to do this evening, uh, similar to last year, give each group about five minutes, come to the podium, uh, make their presentation uh, for you all to ask any questions. And if it's the pleasure of the board, we'll just start at the top and go with uh, Mills River Farm Market.
Please do not touch your microphone.
Don't move the microphone, Joe, that's.
You got the sign covered. Hey, good afternoon. I'm Joe Britton, Executive Director with Mills River Farmers Market, as you all know. And first off, I want to thank you all for your support for the local nonprofits. It helps us all to work become even better. Uh, another little pro, not problem, but item that has come up. We need to strike Sandra Goot as a board of directors, members of the Mills River Farm Market. She is just a volunteer. She is not on our board. She is not a voting member. She is just helping us a whole lot. The farmers market is coming asking for financial support for operational expenses this year. This is the first time we've asked, actually asked for operation expenses. Our all volunteer market has grown to become so much more than a place to buy food. Our market put back into our community over nineteen thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars in SNAP sales. Uh, thirty-four thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars in credit card debit credit sales and at least fifty thousand dollars in cash sales. Now, we've discussed before, you know, we don't know our cash sales because our vendors won't tell us. Uh, I guess they're afraid we're gonna turn them in or something. So, you know, that's that we, we estimated a little low on the cash, but that still brings a total of a hundred and three thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars that the market that is brought in through, or funneled through the market that stays in the community instead of going to Ingles or, you know, going off. So uh,
Okay, so you all know that the farmers market is a very viable part of our community. And it is a destination that people love to come to. And in the past, it's been run by volunteers only, but we have gotten to the point that it is not feasible for that to continue if we're gonna continue to be an excellent farmers market. So we are asking for help with some positions. Um, a market manager position, we're looking at twenty hours, uh, twenty dollars an hour for fifteen hours a week, twenty-eight weeks for a total of eight thousand four hundred dollars. The demonstration kitchen is a big part of the farmers market and given two of each, okay? Joe's gonna hand you something just so that you know, the demonstration kitchen is not just a place for somebody hands out food samples. It is an educational piece that is very important to the farmers market. We're asking for a hundred dollars a week for twenty-eight weeks to pay for a kitchen coordinator. This position in the past was funded by grant dollars and uh, those grant dollars have dried up. And uh, we don't want to be caught where uh, we can't supply that program because of a lack of a grant. We feel like consistent funding from the town would make sure that our feet were always on solid ground instead of on quicksand from year to year. Uh, food and supplies would be twenty dollars a week for twenty-eight weeks, five hundred and sixty dollars, uh, given a total of three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars to go toward the kitchen. And the papers that you have in your hand show that the lesson plan is created each week by the kitchen coordinator. Uh, we also have a sign in sheet where people sign in to, that they have seen the demonstration so that we have some data that we can actually go to when we are talking to grantors about, about this or any other funder. There's, there's a copy of a recipe as the shoppers would get as well as uh, the final piece, I believe we've got the participation survey and the little red loyalty card that we use. Um, the loyalty card I did not even put down here as an expense, but we purchase items that would be useful in a kitchen. And when folks watch three demonstrations and they turn in their card, they may get a new set of measuring spoons or measuring cups or a meat thermometer, things that might be missing in a kitchen when you're trying to teach somebody how to, to cook from scratch. Uh, also folks that move around a lot might, might have to leave that behind and, and not have them. All right, this year we're also looking for a coordinator for the kids zone. This is something that we've just relied on volunteers in the past. This has not been a funded position before, but I'd like to see that happen. Uh, again, a hundred dollars a week for twenty-eight weeks with uh, twenty-eight hundred dollars as, as money for that. Supplies, ten dollars a week because the children all receive things uh, there, it's a hands-on activity. Um, and you have in that little packet, Joe just handed you a sign in sheet where we don't ask for private information about kids. The parents put their name and how many kids are there so that we're not getting anything from them that could perhaps be used in any way in the wrong pretext. Um, and I gave you a sample of the kinds of activities that go on at market and you can see that it is a learning activity for the children. It's not just a babysitting activity uh, where we just sit and play games or something while the parents shop. They are learning. Uh, this one in particular that I gave you the sample of for the worms activity for the weekend composting, we are in negotiations with Henderson County Solid Waste to get one of their compost gurus to come out and help with that activity. So we do pull in outside agencies to, to do that. The lending library, we're asking for four hundred dollars. Uh, we have good quality children's books that have to deal with what we're teaching, like the one for the lesson that you have in your hand uh, about the, the worm grower. I can't think, Winnie Finn Worm Farmer, I think is the name of the book. So uh, we have those on hand for the kids to check out and bring back to market and also to be used during the daily activities. Four hundred dollars would go a long way toward adding some new books. I do like to purchase hard cop, hardcover books because they stand up to the abuse of travel a lot better than paperbacks do. Uh, so they do cost a little bit more than just a paperback book. So it's a total of thirty-four eighty for the kids zone. So that's asking for a total of five thousand two hundred and forty dollars in operating expenses. The market itself is not a money-making machine. The vendors pay eighty dollars to be there for a year. They pay two dollars each day that goes towards the uh, fee structure to pay for our ability to accept debit credit and SNAP. Uh, the little eighty dollars a, a month times the thirty people that come does not go very far. We have to pay an intern eighty for the year, excuse me. Um, we pay an intern that helps out at the desk, helps out with setup, tear down. Uh, they get, uh, this past year they got sixty dollars a week to help. I would like to increase that a little, but it all depends on our vendor fees. We pay for our insurance out of that. We pay for all advertising, signage, flagging, anything else that goes. The portage, yeah, all the operations of the market come out of the vendor fees. There is not enough money in the vendor fees to pay for these special programs. And these special programs are what set us apart from other farmers markets in the area. I know, I know also, we've talked to you about some of the ARPA funds coming up with our double SNAP program. We definitely need support for that. It again, has been funded by grant dollars for the last four years, and the grants have run out. And so the new funding that we have received will only match certain things, fruits and vegetables. Not meat, not milk, not breads, not plants that grow food, not any of the other things. Not eggs, nothing else that you can buy at the farmers market will the grant dollars fund anymore. So we're needing to be able to offer matching dollars for all of those other food supplies for families. Last year, we matched nearly $10,000, and we anticipate the need to keep rising from year to year on this, especially as more and more people realize that this program is available. So we are asking for $70,000 for the life of the ARPA funding. I believe that's for four years. And that $70,000 to be spread over that four-year period. We feel that should be sufficient to support the double dollars program as it continues to grow. Any questions?
About how many vendors in a good year does the market usually see at the height of your?
Okay, right now, we have 38 that have applied. And of that 38, I believe 36 have had approval. Not all of them will come every day. Some of them are day vendors that just come occasionally. And they are all from within a 50-mile radius of Mills River. And a lot of them are from Transylvania, Buncombe, Henderson County. Very few live outside of this area.
And of course, since it's a producer-only market, the vendors, you know, we start out with not as much produce, build, and then as this fall comes, we slack off.
And you kept throwing out 28, so I figured 28 weeks is how many?
Yeah, it's May through October, so it's roughly six months, you know, plus a couple of. We did the 28 weeks for the market manager for sure because they'll be working a little bit before and a little bit after market season opens. And the Board of Directors makes all the decisions regarding programs and special events and, and so forth. And the manager would be enacting that, being the feet on the ground to make that happen.
And there's usually a holiday market in November, correct?
Correct.
That helps benefit for the school.
Yes.
Right, all the proceeds from that, we donate to the school. One's for the general fund and one is for their cafeteria program where if a child comes in and doesn't have lunch money one day, they give them a plastic cheese on two pieces of white bread and maybe a carton of milk, usually a glass of water. And so we want to, if a kid comes in and doesn't have lunch money, they still get to eat one.
And that is not really a part of the farmers market. The farmers market sponsors that and organizes that, but it's strictly a fundraiser for the school.
So Daniel, are, are you looking for these requests to be approved or, or tonight? Or are we just taking these requests to see how we can work them in our budget? Yes, I, I should have explained that before we started. But yes, the, the purpose of this evening is for you all to hear the requests publicly. And then my job will be to look back at the budget and look at the requests and read the policy and see who best fits based on that criterion. And then when I present the budget to you in a couple of weeks, we'll present the folks that meet all the criteria, of course. And then there'll be recommended amounts. At that point, council could decide to fund the full request, modified request, whatever. It'll be council's, council's pleasure. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, next on our list, we have the Mills River Life and Richmond Center.
Well, good evening. My name is Ruth Williams, and I'm here to represent the Mills River Life and Richmond Center, which is, and it goes by Merlack as well. It's just shortened. We are Senior Adult Outreach Ministry for Senior Adults. We're an agent at home in the community. Merlack exists to promote healthy agents of senior adults, which are a vital part of our community. They have so much life experience and wisdom to share with us. And these senior desert, senior adults deserve the respect and the support of this community in which they live in. Mills River Life and Richmond Center has been providing a place to enrich the lives of these seniors for the past 15 years. Merlack is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and operational expenses are covered through grants, donations, and fundraisers. For almost 10 years, Duke Endowment was a financial contributor. Not only that, but that gave us the startup money to begin the program 15 years ago. Because of the growth of Mills River, and I can't explain their criteria, but we no longer meet the rural area criteria that Duke Endowment funded us to begin with. So we've lost a huge, huge funding opportunity. This evening, I would like to ask you to, to invest your resources in this very successful program that benefits the lives of many people in this community. Did you all receive the packets? Okay, do you have any questions?
I don't have any. Sandra, Randy, James.
How, how much was your Duke Endowment?
It was, each grant that we got was a three-year grant, and I'd have to go back. I think the first one was $65,000. I know one of them was 60, and it was dispersed over a three-year period. So you're looking at 20,000 a year, give or take a few thousand either way. I, I don't know the exact one of the third, the amount of the third grant. And the, the money that we are coming before you tonight asking for would be used for food to actually prepare, to have the meals that we give out. As example, today, we served up 93 meals. And that's just for today. So, and we're also very much willing to give you receipts to show you how every penny is spent. We try to be very frugal, and we've done that with other grants, and we're happy to supply that information.
Um, does your, like, if you get money, does it roll over year to year?
It does. It does.
So if you had, if you had more than what you're required to run your program for a year, you'd just put it in the bank?
It just, it stays in the bank, and we just are very thankful and roll into the next year. We do not stop applying for grants. We do not stop fundraising, and we do not stop donations just because it would be in the bank. Because I don't know what the next year's going to be like. You know, we're always, we're always trying to be frugal with our money, but we're also trying to find resources, resources to help. This year alone, two grants that we applied for have already been denied. One was, I don't want to call them by name, but both of them were in Buncombe County. I don't know if it's because we're in Henderson County and they're Buncombe. I'm not sure. But it's, it's getting harder and harder with grants. I know Joe and Linda spoke of that with the farmers market. It's true in every aspect of grant funding.
Most of the time when you apply for grants, it's through a private, a private entity.
Through trust, through foundations. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to name them all. I, I mean, just because of their, you know, I don't want to expose them, but out of respect for them. Okay, thank you all very much.
Next on our list is the Mills River Partnership. Maria Bies is here. Yes, okay.
Hi, I'm Maria Bies with Mills River Partnership, and thanks for having us tonight to be able to ask for some ongoing support and tell you a little bit about what we do. We work, our mission is to protect or improve the overall health of the Mills River and its watershed. And we do that by working with landowners, farmers, homeowners, and government entities like yourselves to put projects on the ground that will prevent sediment and other pollutants from entering the river. We do lots of education with local schools and organizations like 4H Clubs and property of extension groups, and adults like Shade Your Stream workshops to give tools to local residents on projects they can do that aren't very expensive, that can help erosion issues in, in their streams. So we apply for state and federal funds, grant funds, and we've been quite successful at that. And all these grants ask for some local match. And it's amazing what a small amount of match can, can do to leverage large funds from these grants. We do receive some funding from City of Asheville and City of Hendersonville each year as well. And this is the first year that we have formally asked the town for financial support, although you have supported us in other ways, certainly in the past, by giving us a good board member to be a liaison with our board. And we've worked closely with Nicole at the park here on the project that is going on currently. We're really just finished. And I, if any of you here haven't been down to see the, the riverbank restoration, I encourage you to do so. So we have a, a small staff and just myself and one intern, really, that does the outreach and education programs. And so we, we are asking for some support from you for operational expenses. And we have just applied for some funds to do some log jam clearing and debris clearing with the soil and water districts. We actually work closely with Henderson County Soil and Water to design our agriculture best management practices with farms in the community. And those funds that we just applied for, for jam removals will take the logs out, but not really do any repair work afterward. So we'll be looking for some of these funds to possibly support that where we need to reseed the banks and stabilize them so it doesn't wash away. So it, do you, I, I've sent a letter in as well. You've probably seen that. If you have any questions about our work or our budget, I'd be happy to answer.
One question, your partnership, does it stay inside the 22 square miles of Mills River? Or does it get out past that?
We other, we do a little bit of work outreach and education with the larger community, but all the funds that we raise go directly to projects within this watershed and in this community.
That answered my question. Anybody got anything else?
How far upriver do you go?
Well, we, about 90% of our work is within the private lands. So, you know, homeowners and, and farms and such. But we have worked a little bit up in Pisgah as well. And that, I said, that's really about 10% of the work we do.
I mean, how far up Mills River do you go?
All the way.
To the campground?
Yeah. We work closely with North Mills River Farm on some projects, and, and they've hosted Mills River Day a few years. And that's a, a big partner of ours, as well as lots of small farms in the community, too.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next on our list, we have the Smart Start for Partnership for Children. Kelly Hart is here to present.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Hart, and I'm the Program Director at Smart Start Partnership for Children. We are an early childhood nonprofit that serves all children, birth through five years of age, in Henderson County and their families and caregivers. Our mission is to support, educate, and advocate to build a strong foundation for the young children in our community. We want to thank you all for helping support us in building that strong foundation for the past two years through our kindergarten transition initiative, and in general, for providing support to nonprofits to partner with you to serve the residents of Mills River through your grant funding program. Did you know that a newborn's brain is a quarter of the size of an average adult brain? And that it doubles in size in the first three years of life and reaches 90% of its full development and ultimate size by five years of age? That we're born with all the brain cells that we'll ever have for our entire lives. And, and what makes those work are the connections between all of those cells. So in early childhood, these connections are made at an amazing rate of 1 million neural connections every second, which is far more than any other time in life. Those connections that are used frequently grow stronger, and the connections that are neglected are pruned away, which impacts our ability to learn and grow for the rest of our lives. The brain science shows us that the first day of kindergarten is way too late to invest in children. Kids who show up to kindergarten unprepared are far less likely to succeed in school and in life. And we know that kids who are unprepared when they start kindergarten rarely catch up. We also recognize that it's not up to the five-year-olds to be ready for school, and that the transition to kindergarten is not an event that happens to a child, but it's a process among partners. And most important for this transition process are the partnerships and the relationships. So Henderson County is fortunate to have a collaborative initiative called Ready that is focused on ensuring that every child in Henderson County has the opportunity to arrive at kindergarten ready to learn and grow. And our efforts are grounded in our relationships. We're working to build and strengthen relationships between childcare facilities and elementary schools, between these facilities and schools and the families that they serve, and within the community at large, all with one goal in mind, which is kids arriving to kindergarten ready. So we started small four years ago with a core group of dedicated people and organizations putting our heads together to determine the best way to improve school readiness in our community. And despite the pandemic, we have quickly expanded to reach more and more children each year. You can see on the colorful graphic in your little package that the Ready Leadership Team is made up of those dedicated organizations that founded the initiative, and that we also have teams focused on outreach, social emotional preparedness, data, and shared professional development. And the research in early childhood shows that each community benefits from a customized plan with activities and events and materials that are catered to their specific population, which is why we aspire to have a school-specific kindergarten transition team in every Henderson County public school. These school-specific transition teams are composed of kindergarten teachers, other relevant elementary school staff, preschool teachers, early educators from the early care and education settings, church staff, town staff, and are open to any interested members of the community. So these groups of people get together to develop a plan that's divided into these three sections of the school-to-family connections, the school-to-school connections, and the community-to-school connections. And we provide the guidance and the ideas, like the menu of kindergarten transition activities that you have in your packet, to get their juices flowing. And then we help them. That team determines what works for their school and their families, and formulate those into a plan and implement it throughout the school year. So two years ago, the town of Mills River granted us $3,000 to launch a specific, a school-specific kindergarten transition team at Mills River Elementary. And that team met during a very difficult COVID year and developed an innovative plan to reach their families. And our dream came true. In the following year, the town of Mills River gave us $5,000 to allow them to provide a day camp for their rising kindergarten students last August to help them prepare for school. The following year, which is this current school year, we also received $3,000 from the town to launch a team at Glen Marlowe, and both of those teams are active now. So we are requesting for continued funding for $5,000 for each team to utilize to make sure that they can implement the plans that they create to best meet the needs of their future students and the Mills River families that they serve so that their kids will be ready for kindergarten. So we thank you and hope that you'll join us in building that strong foundation that our kids need. Any questions?
So does these teams work with all the kindergartners? Do they, or just specific ones?
So we are trying to reach the kids before they get to kindergarten.
Before they ever get there.
Correct.
So the teams are made up from these Glen Marlowe and Mills River, but they're reaching out to the kids before they get?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so that when they arrive, they're already welcome into that school environment.
How many children are, do you currently have participating?
So there are, Mills River and Glen Marlowe are two of the largest Henderson County public schools. I think there's 92 and 93 kids currently enrolled at both of those schools, with already over 60 registered at both schools for the following year, who were able to take advantage of some of the things that we've already done this spring to help prepare them for next year.
Your day camp, when it's, when you put that on, do you already have a list of the kids that have enrolled at the respective schools to help?
All the ones who have registered, yes. The, all the ones who have registered are invited to attend. And we do a lot of outreach, kind of at the school district level. And with Smart Start, we have a lot of partnerships with childcare centers and other early childhood-serving organizations to get the word out about registration so that they can register, and then the families can, or the schools can connect with them as early. And then the families can or the schools can connect with them as early as possible to make sure they come to all of those kinds of things.
James, I don't want to forget you. Do you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Housing Assistance Corporation. Ashlyn McCoy is going to speak with you.
Pass you guys out some pictures really quick if you don't mind. All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Ash McCoy, the Executive Director for the Housing Assistance Corporation. If you do not know, the Housing Assistance Corporation is a local nonprofit out of Henderson County. And our sole mission is to provide safe and affordable housing to persons of limited income. We're here tonight to request sixty five hundred dollars in order to provide funding for staff support for at least five projects in the Mills River area. This funding will help cover staff costs associated with completing essential health and safety repairs for the low income persons here. Currently, we do have five clients living in Mills River that will that are slated to receive repairs sometime this year. And so this funding would help those folks. The repairs needed affect the household's ability to remain safely in a home. It can impact the households, excuse me, households overall health. Again, these clients are very low or very low typically. We see folks making fifteen thousand dollars or less a year in our program. And about seventy percent of our clients are elderly and or disabled. So the town of Mills River will definitely be investing in the housing initiative that we that has been proven to work for housing assistance for many years. Been in the community for thirty four years and will be improving the standards of living directly for residents here in Mills River. The pictures I've provided you all, and I didn't provide them to the public just out of courtesy for the client. Were completed this past year with the funding that you provided us last year. The client had an accident that left his ankles badly damaged and he had an increased need for safety and accessibility features. So our team went out, we replaced the ramp that you can see was badly rotten, provided an accessible egress to every door on the home. We replaced windows which were broken, installed new doors to meet accessibility features and replaced the flooring throughout his house. And without the assistance that we are able to provide for him, he would not have been able to return from the rehabilitation rehabilitation center. Because his home would not have met his increased needs. So this was a really valuable project. We are grateful for the support you have provided us in the past year and are looking forward to working together to continue to better the area that we are in and for the lives of the people we care so much about. You have any questions, I'm happy to take them. Thank you.
Are these homes owned or they rented?
They are typically homeowner. So any funding source that we work with, we cannot work on a rented lot. They can be a mobile home that they own and it can be on a rented lot, but it cannot be a rental situation.
So I don't think you were the one team last year.
I was. I was, yeah. My Director of Home Repair was with me. He did it probably.
Last year, you requested ten thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And there was, I remember.
It was seven. Yes, sir. So the ratio is still the same. It's about thirteen hundred dollars per client. So and so we directly ask because we have the five identified.
And last last year, you were able to satisfy the needs for all the ones that you had a request for.
Yes, sir.
In the town of Mills River.
Yes, sir.
And just to clarify again, any of this money is to stay in the town.
It is, yep. So we put it in a restricted account. It gets allocated every month directly to people who live here.
Just one quick question was, one, thank you for the pictures. You read your proposal and then it's very good, but this really brings it to light. My question is, I take it from the pictures that obviously the Housing Assist Corporation, obviously, you must do something about materials and labor subsidized or donated because you're doing a tremendous amount of work and amount of funding.
Yes, sir. So this causes specifically for our staff to work on the intake application with the client, go out and do inspections, do the work write ups, do the bidding process, and then do the reporting afterwards. We pair this funding with other grant sources that supply the materials, the other labor, if it's needed through subcontractors or things like that. So we are pairing sources to make what you have in front of you completed.
Do y'all have to apply for permitting?
Anybody got anything else? We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, last on our list, this is not included in your packet, but we have a request from Blue Ridge Literacy Council. Katrina McGuire is here to make that request and Katrina, give me one moment and I'll hold your presentation.
No, thank you. Good evening. My name is Katrina McGuire. I'm the Executive Director for Blue Ridge Literacy Council. I did put a PowerPoint together just because as far as I'm know, this is our first time coming and requesting funds from Mills River. And so I just wanted to kind of share with you a little bit of what we do and how we'd like to partner with Mills River. So thank you for having me today. So you know, as I sit and listen to other requests here and what we think about or the workforce development, literacy is a thread in so many things that we do. We focus on adult literacy. We focus on transforming lives by cultivating literacy skills that promote economic and social success. And I think we can agree that if you're not literate or you're low literate, you're going to have a difficult time being successful, being able to have housing, being able to even grow a garden if you're not able to read instructions or how to do things. And so it's very important. The council has been around for just about thirty years, started out in Blue Ridge Community College. And we've now expanded into our own facility in Patton Park in Hendersonville. However, we serve all of Henderson County as well as some parts of Transylvania County. So we talked about literacy. Some of the things that we also do with literacy, it's not just about being able to read, it's about being able to comprehend the written word. If you don't understand the world around you, it's going to be difficult to even get along with others. It's going to be difficult to participate in your community and to understand some of the laws and regulations that are surrounding that as well. So we really do believe that literacy is the common thread to help people succeed. So right now, one in ten adults across the country are only able to read at a third grade level. And that's read, write, do mathematics. That affects our economy. They say that if we could raise that up to a fifth grade level, those forty three million, about forty three million individuals, we could see our economy grow by two point two trillion dollars. That is from pro literacy dot org. That is a national organization that covers literacy councils and does that research for us. In Henderson County, then, it's that translates into one out of four individuals that don't read, write, or do mathematics above the third grade level. And there's a variety of reasons for that. That could be generational poverty, it could be generational low literacy, it could be coming here as an immigrant and not knowing the language. And so we serve all of those types of folks in our programs. So pre COVID, our average was about three hundred and twenty five students. Last year, we served about one hundred and ninety seven students and that number now is growing. We have a waiting list that is growing up over fifty students right now. Twelve of students we've identified actually live here in Mills River. However, many of our students actually work here in Mills River, specifically at some of the local larger areas like Flavor First, Tri-Hi-Still, Van Mundergen. I am happy to announce that just last month, one of those employees became a citizen of the United States. And so that is what they work for. Some of those folks that come in that have low English language skills, we provide tutoring for them. Our tutors are all volunteers. We cannot do our work without our volunteer tutors. But we need to train them, we need to continually educate them and continually provide support, not only for our tutors, but also our students. So our vision is that the community gets stronger because we value literacy. And so we're just asking you to partner with us in doing so. So our next slide will show you just who we serve. We serve adults, adults looking to improve their English language abilities. Maybe they didn't graduate from high school, they're looking for their GED, they're looking for their high school equivalency. Also for people that do not speak English that come to this country and they're looking to be able to just raise their pay. One of our young ladies, we gave was able to get her CNA. And just by getting her CNA and we trained her to in her English language skills, her employer gave her two dollar an hour raise. That's significant for people, especially when you talk about housing and things like that in the community. We also work with families, we can go back, I'm just going to go through that really quick. We work with families, Smart Start talked about kindergarten. We specifically work with our non English speaking families right now in a program called Alberto Puerto's that helps the parent be the child's first teacher. And so we focus on the parent understanding the school system that they're attending. And here in Mills River, the whole Henderson County School District has a twenty four percent right now of Hispanic or Latinx families. And so we're trying to help them assimilate into the culture that they're moving into and also helping them teach English. They can be advocates for their children. And then with childcare, we also address some of the preschoolers that are trying to learn English as well. We also serve at risk youth. And so any of your teenagers or whatnot that might be on the edge of maybe making poor decisions. We provide academic tutoring to bring their grades up. And also we provide interpersonal skills so that we can develop some healthy habits for them. And lastly, we help our senior community by teaching them digital literacy skills and to help them with their health skills or our healthy living skills by helping them understand how to engage with the portal. If you are needing your medical records or telehealth, if you are not able to get to the doctor all the time. Merlak just talked about seniors staying relevant. All of a lot of our tutors, almost eighty five percent of our tutors are all in retirement. And studies show that if you are relevant, that you are giving your experience and you're helping other people, that you will lead a help your life after retirement. And so those are some of the adult people that we serve. So this is all done through goal centered tutoring. And my slideshow is probably just a little bit too long, so I'll just kind of move forward on to just my request. So I am just asking for the light blue, one more, one more, there you go. We're just and want to expand our services into Mills River. Last year, I had the pleasure of actually meeting one of your councilmen, Brian Caskey, and we talked a little bit about, he came to an event of mine and I was learning more about Mills River. As you know, I'm also a resident here and so I'm learning about the community as well. So we want to bring awareness to literacy, adult literacy here to Mills River. And so we're asking anywhere from twenty five hundred to five thousand dollars to help start a family literacy program here at one of your elementary schools. We also want to be able to recruit tutors and then get the word out to our students. We have plenty of students that do live and work here in Mills River that are looking for services. So we want to partner with the library and see if we can't get space. That's where tutoring usually happens is either at the library, at public places, or even in our building in Hendersonville. Or perhaps there could be other partnerships that we can make. So we're just asking that we get some additional funding that can help provide. It's about a thousand dollars per student to get them through tutoring for a year. That includes pre and post testing, evidence based curriculum, as well as tutor training and then overhead costs as well. And so with that, we're trying to expand and double that number that we can help here in Mills River. Until the next slide, I think, kind of says that. And so we just, you know, want to be grateful for your support. In any way that we can partner is always valuable. You can always reach out to me as well. And perhaps maybe you would get this slide as well, so you have our information. That's it.
Are y'all able to use any space for tutoring at the schools at this point or no?
At the public schools, not not currently, no. Well, except for family literacy, we do the Henderson Public School System does allow us to do programming at the schools after school.
One question was just simply, when you're conducting classes, you put up numbers of students, is that done at your Patton Park facility or where is a lot of work being done?
A lot of it gets done at the library. So we hope to make a partnership here with your with your library here, as well as Blue Ridge Community College. We have tutoring space there as well. And then we're always looking for other partnerships. Some churches also make space available as well. We have, as you see, one hundred and ninety seven students, that's one on one tutoring most of the time. So they're finding different places to tutor. We always encourage public places, so not in your home.
The tutoring session typically lasts?
So tutoring usually is about an hour and a half and usually depending upon the ambition of the student, about twice a week. And it depends what program we have citizenship, we have English as a second language, we have GED tutoring. And we have workforce development tutoring to help gain experience in a field that you want.
We thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, that is all we had on the the list that we're aware of. I don't know if there's anyone here this evening that was not aware that is interested in making a request. That's all we have.
Okay, all right. So with that being said, I guess we'll move on to the Party in the Park request.
Mr. Mayor, we and Council, this is a request that we've had the last couple of years. The Moser Church, not a church, Methodist Church, I'm sorry. Host party in the park each year, the town has been partnering with them for several years. And Nicole is going to give you the rundown of the request and what exactly it means for the town.
I think you summed it up pretty nicely. So this is a request we've had and has been approved. I think the this is, I think, the fourth year. We do have Sarah Murray, who is the event coordinator with Mills River United Methodist Church. But if you don't know what this event is, it is not a church event. It is a true event that the church puts on for the community. And it's basically a big back to school party. And not only is a party, they do a really amazing job and I don't know how they do it. They give four hundred backpacks of school supplies away. And I'm not talking that, you know, each kid gets a pencil. When the kids leave this event, they have what they need to start school. They give haircuts away, they give food away. They want to make sure kids in this community are ready to start their new school year. And is they're a great organization to partner with. They come prepared with their own volunteers. We don't have to worry about parking, they take their trash with them. They've really been great community partners to work with. We also typically give away bike helmets during the event. That's the the town's contribution to the event. Last year, I think we gave away about three hundred and fifty bike helmets, which we actually just got noticed this week that we did receive the grant from NC DOT to do that again this year. So I will invite Sarah up here.
Can you say anything? I think they've kind of covered it all, but I'm Sarah Murray, I'm a member of Mills River United Methodist Church. And we have been holding Party in the Park here since twenty fifteen. It started out, just like Nicole said, we wanted to reach out beyond the walls of the church and include the community in something. Our, we had a member at the time, Mary Hooper Carson, her, the Hooper family, I think, in Hooper Lane over here somewhere, I think. The family owned that and she suggested we come out here. And it started out just as a futile school supplies and it's grown by leaps and bounds. And last year, our party twenty twenty one, I think our risk management team counted in two hours, six hundred and forty one cars. And we lost track at over a thousand people. We were trying to keep up and it was just so crazy, we couldn't. But we did pack four hundred backpacks. Our fellowship hall looked like the Office Max, it was just crazy. But we ran out of four hundred backpacks in less than an hour. We ran out of our eight hundred hot dog suppers in about an hour and ten minutes. So we did have chips and drinks for everybody, but we certainly need to up our game this year. So we want you to know that every penny of that two hundred and fifty dollars is well spent. We have the party rain or shine. Last year was shine, which was so nice, it helps us out. But if we do have rain, we will just plan a drive through down by the pavilion and give out what supplies and food we can. And if there's anything left over, it goes directly to the schools and we pack up the food and take it right to the rescue mission. So y'all are all invited, August seventh, hope to see you there. Thank you.
So there's a specific request before you this evening, Council, is to but not to waive the the application fee for this event. And there's nothing in the town's policies or rules that authorizes town staff to do this. So it's really just a question for the councilor's side.
Could I enter, can I hear a motion to approve that request?
I'll make a motion that we waive the park rental fee for Party in the Park.
Thank you, Randy. Second.
Yeah, second.
All of that, yeah, absolutely.
I, three things. One, I'm fully supportive of a way.
Three things. One, I'm fully supportive of waiving the fee. Two, I don't think it should be coming for council. I'd like to see that done by the director. And thirdly, the only thing I want to see, I'd like to see come for us, council, is just a criteria by which the director will decide who's worthy of waiver and who isn't. So I think that we just need to see that once and authorize staff to make any decision that needs to be for this going forward and the other event. But with that, any part, I mean, that's not here nor there with the motion, but I'm perfectly comfortable with waiving it. But I would like to take this off the council's table, but just get that one thing from staff is the criteria which they recommend to use to waive the fee.
I agree with that 100%. But with that being said, let's move ahead with the motion. But before we leave this, we'll get staff on board to generate that. So all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Everybody's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that passed. So so I think you and Nicole worked together to generate the criteria for this to bring forth. So we can move forward with these a lot easier.
Yep, we sure will. We'll draft something and bring it back.
How many, how many other requests do we get like this a year? Two or three?
This has been the only one we historically have gotten requests for. Not to say they won't come up. We typically only see maybe five or so special event applications a year. The majority of them are five Ks.
Okay. Okay.
Nicole, can I ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
Last year you gave bike helmets away, right?
Yes.
And the town purchased more bike helmets to give away. Did you?
We did. We budgeted money this year, so we didn't have to come back and ask you to purchase more bike helmets. So that's already been budgeted for in last year's budget. We are in the process of buying the additional helmets that we know we'll need and give away.
And you gave them all away last year.
We did not, only because the line was so long. We need more volunteers. So any of you that, we had the Blue Ridge Bicycle Club come out and help us last year. I think a lot of people didn't get them because they didn't want to wait in line. So we are happy to accept any volunteers that want to come out and help fit children bicycle helmets.
How many do you have left over?
I have an inventory up there. It was just under 100. So we factored that into the ones that we can give away this year. They're still all well within date, so.
And just for clarification, Nicole, will you just touch briefly on the NCDOT grant that we utilize for this?
Sure, yeah. So the North Carolina Department of Transportation has a bicycle safety program that comes out yearly. Municipalities can apply for anywhere. Some municipalities get 50, some get 100. You just have to document that you're using them to go for children at need or at risk of not having bicycle helmets, which is why we paired it with the Party in the Park event, because we know they also target low-income children that are in need of things that maybe their parents can't afford. And they've been very supportive of us. It's just something we have to report every year back on how many we give away. And they've always been supportive. I think this is our fourth year successfully applying for that grant. So.
How often do we see children, kids riding in the park without helmets?
Pretty often. Yeah, it is. We do keep some on there like our Rangers when they see. So, yeah, so they know where we keep our little stash. And so when they see kids without bike helmets, they always offer them to the parents. Yeah.
Anything else on this? Okay, we'll move on to the American Rescue Plan Policies.
So at the beginning of the meeting, I mentioned that there were a few documents on the table in front of you. One that I forgot about was has this blue bar at the top of it. It's called the NEU Award Summary 2021. NEU stands for Non-Entitlement Unit. Just for a little bit of background, there is a standard and it escapes me at the moment. But cities over a certain size are called entitlement units, meaning every year they get a direct allocation of community development block grants for housing and several other topics. And the rest of us who don't qualify are called non-entitlement units. We have to apply for those types of projects if we ever want to do those. So that's just a little bit of context. So this is the agreement that was signed last year when the town first got noticed from the governor that the funds were coming down from the feds. So it's just included as reference and background for discussion in front of you this evening. And I did include it. It is in your packet, but I included it because we discovered that some of the copies that were in your packet didn't have all the pages. Some did, some didn't. So that was a very strange inconsistencies. That's why we we gave you the clean copy. So in front of you this evening are several different policies as well as an ordinance regarding the funding for the art performs. We've been talking about this for the last couple of months now. And we worked with Land of Sky recently to get all of these policies prepared and modified to fit Mills River. What we did, I did discover a couple of typos that we left in some language from a previous version that we'll need to correct. But by and large, these are, these are straight from the school government. We put in standards for the town's allotment as opposed to previous versions. The specific policies are records retention, conflict of interest, cost principle, eligible use, and non-discrimination. And they are very repetitive. When you read them, you'll see that the very similar language is in is in all of them. The conflict of interest is the longest one. It's several pages. It has a couple of typos referencing the village, the village instead of the town. By and large, that will not apply to the town simply because as using the funds for revenue replacement, we won't be doing, I mean, we could, but it's unlikely that we'll be doing what's called a sub-recipient agreement. A sub-recipient agreement is just that. So the town was the recipient of the funds. And if it so chose, could contract with another organization and pass the funds directly through to them. And then the that sub-recipient is responsible for the exact same set of standards the town would be in terms of administration, managing the funds, reporting the funds, all that, all that stuff. But again, it's unlikely that we're going to do that unless some very specific project comes up. As with revenue replacement I described last time, the project budget ordinance that was provided to you goes back to July 1st of the current year. And it will run through June 30th of this current fiscal year that we're in. So that on July 1st, we start with a credit that'd be used against that claim of lost revenue that could be spent for any eligible governmental activity legal in North Carolina. So I'm happy to go through these one by one if you have questions. That's all I have as far as background information for you. You will have a couple more of these coming, but they're very, very minor compared to what we have this evening. These are the bare bones minimum requirement to get these funds out the door to eligible recipients.
So I have something then. So it's on the page where you break it down. What you're going to spend the general certain administration services through period.
On the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
So the third one down here, it's it's from July the 1st through March the 31st of 24. So why is that not go all the way to June? Is that where the money runs out?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, the way the way it was. Now, this will be modified over the next couple of years, depending upon, you know, new staff are added or staff leaves, something to that effect.
Okay.
But we we estimated higher inflation for the upcoming year and then hopefully reduce inflation the following year. But basically we took the total value, divided it by 12 and then that gets you to March that last year.
I assume that's what it was. That's one.
Yep, that's it.
So Danny, you're looking for us to approve these by motion? Individually?
No, you can. There's a, there's a resolution that should be on top of everything that references the titles of all of these. It's Resolution 202022-02. Resolution adopting policies required for spending of the American Rescue Rescue Fund Act. You will, you will need to do the resolution and then the ordinance on separate motions if your council's ready to do that.
The ordinance isn't subject to public comment, public hearing, that type of.
I mean, you're welcome to certainly do that, but it's not required to.
If we do this and it all passes not, can we get the fire department their money?
Yes, after you'd have to accept the resolution, pass the ordinance and then make a motion to transfer those funds to the fire department. We just have to have the record reflective that the resolutions or ordinance were in place before the funds went out the door.
Okay.
If everybody's had time to look it over, yeah, except on motion to approve the resolution.
Mayor Gaunt, I move we approve resolution adopting policies required for spending under the American Rescue Fund Act.
Thank you, Jeff. Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
You're very confident that this covers all the town's bases as far as what we have to do with the federal government to make sure we're not liable for any spend.
As the rule stands right now, yes, this covers us. And that's the only caveat that I say because the various trainings that we've been over the last couple of months. They say that the treasury might amend the rule, but the if it does amend it, it would loosen standards, not make things more complicated.
And that was the consensus at the league meeting the other day.
Yes.
Does the text changes, changing village to town? Does that maybe be addressed in this motion or is that?
You, it, we, what would be helpful is if you would amend the motion to say with corrections to the conflict of interest policy. And it would be those typos essentially.
I would like to amend my motion to reflect that text changes.
Thank you for catching that.
I'll second.
We got Sandra with a second. All in favor?
If you would please do a roll call on this one, Mayor.
All right. James?
Hi.
Sandra? Randy? Shannon?
Hi.
Jeff? Okay, all in favor?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now on the, you need one on the ordinance itself?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll entertain that motion from someone.
Mayor Gaunt, I move to approve the grant project ordinance for the town of Mills River Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds.
Thank you, Jeff. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? None? All in favor? Roll call. James?
Hi.
Sandra? Randy? Hi. Jeff, all in favor? Okay. Need anything else on the rescue act?
That's all to get it adopted and ready. If you if you want to authorize the funds to go to the fire department, you would need a separate motion to do that tonight or it can come at a different meeting.
Let's do it.
I make a motion that we forward the fire department, Mills River Fire Department, the $75,000 that was approved previous meetings. Is that okay?
In November of 2011.
In November of 2011.
Got a motion from Randy. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Sandra, any discussion on that?
Just to help a newcomer, that was specifically for premium pay for the staff at the fire department? Or did the fire department come up with that figure? Was that what the town offered?
The fire department came up with the figure and it was designed to be used as premium pay. Just so that the record is clear, premium pay is a specific use allowable under the guidance, under the treasury's final rule. The $75,000 of this council, which is to authorize this evening, if it goes to them. They, I mean, the fire department has said they want to use it for that purpose. But the town is giving it to them as revenue replacement, so there are no strings attached to it. I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Young, but that's the fire department's intention is to use it for that purpose.
I was here for that meeting, but that pretty much is what it was.
Yeah.
I was sitting in the audience here. Any other discussion on this? Here none? Call for vote. James?
Hi.
Sandra? Randy? I'm an I.
Hi.
All in favor, unanimous? Anything else for a regular agenda?
That's all.
Thanks to Victor. Thank you, early Parks and Rec.
Just a few things. I think as you already heard tonight, we have finished construction on the riverbank restoration project. So if you all have not been down there, you definitely need to go check it out. Or I'd be happy to give you a tour if you want to stop by and show you down there. I think our only major outstanding items is our educational signage that will go in there as part of the grant requirement. And we're back ordered on picnic tables till at least July that are going to go under some of the shade trees we planted back down by the river. But we're really excited about that project. I've been getting lots of questions about, well, why haven't you opened the parking lot? And the reason for that is the Hooper Lane Bridge. So we went directly from our construction having issues. So their construction, they actually tore out the culvert that goes under our driveway yesterday. They're starting to work on the replacement and I know the old bridge is supposed to come out next week where they're going to try to, they have to reconnect our parking lot to their driveway. So hopefully by mid-May, they'll get everything reconnected and we'll be able to reopen that back parking lot in time for some Memorial Day boating is our our goal there. Other than that, if anybody was out here this week, we had Kids in Creek, which is a program through Rugby Middle School. So every eighth grader that goes to Rugby Middle School was out in the park this week doing, learning about water quality and water education. So Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, there's literally hundreds of kids. And this year it was particularly great because we got to highlight a riverbank restoration project and why we did that project, which is always just a really cool project because I always take for granted how many kids go to parks. You just assume a kid's going to go to a park. And at that program, so an eighth grade kid, you know, introduced myself and said what we do and they go, you can come here for free is the reaction. So this is really just such a good opportunity to connect our kids in schools of people that don't have another opportunity. So that's really cool. Other than that, we also have a busy week next week. So Rugby Middle School will have play out, host playoffs here next week. So they're playing Canton on Monday. So anybody that wants to come out and cheer on the Rugby Raiders, that would be great. We also have on Tuesday have the mobile food market that comes the first Tuesday of every month from three to four. And other than that, I think I already told you that we did receive the NCDOT bike helmet grant. So lots happening in parks.
And it's my understanding that the fire department might have wanted to test their pumper out and they just decided to squirt some trees on the riverbank?
They did. They they helped us out. We've had a little bit of dry weather and so we had some new trees come in. So they did a good job helping us out.
They didn't want any recognition, but they deserve a little for that.
Yeah, they're, they're always good when I call to to come and help us out whenever, whatever we need with whatever we need. Big shout out to the fire department.
All right, Mike?
One item I wanted to highlight was we have a rezoning case going before the planning board at their meeting next Tuesday. The request is to rezone 140 Emma Sharp Road and 5 Penland Road, which are the properties north and northeast of Bojangles. One of them is where Mills River Auto Brokers currently resides. They're currently zoned mixed use in a little bit of neighborhood commercial and the request is to go to general business. So the planning board will be considering that next week for a recommendation to council. You'll most likely hear from me at the May 12th meeting where we'll decide to set the public hearing date. And I think we're looking at June 9th for that. We're also going to be discussing, I think, half of the topics the council raised at the last meeting, specifically density and housing product types.
Okay. Is that all you have for me? Thank you, Mike, our town manager.
Just one thing. I don't know if you have the pleasure to see the photo on Facebook, but we have a Cy Young candidate here with us. Mayor Gaunt threw the opening pitch last week for Rugby's last home game. That was, that was a fun time.
If you'd have seen the rest of-
The photo was really- The photo was really good. Looked like Nolan Ryan up there. But anyway, Rugby did very well that game and we're excited to have him back next week. And just a reminder, we have a closed session in a few minutes, so that's all I have, thank you.
Well, just a little footnote for that, man him staying out there, we got the crowd, big bunch of people there, you know, I did forewarn him. Hopefully the pitching will get better when me and him leave. Did I not?
Yeah.
I bounced one in there and his was there. So they, they started with two balls.
Yeah. I walked out to that mound and I told Mayor Gonsalves that that's a lot further than I remember.
I said, yes, sir, you're correct. We had fun, that's worth it all, okay. Anything else before we make a motion to go into closed session? You're none?
That's a question of Town Manager, just, we heard a lot of funding requests tonight and most of them are recurring requests and then I guess what triggered it was Mills River Farmers Market. They were, you know, offering or suggesting maybe we should use ARPA funds for some of their needs. Is, is there any strategy to, when you know it's a recurring need, to use these one-time funds, ARPA's? You know, I, I, I know you'll make a recommendation in the budget proposal, but I just, I just wondered about, I think other than Smart Start, might have been startup monies for the or excuse me, excuse me, Blue Ridge Literary, Literacy Council was maybe just looking for startup money maybe one time, but the rest of them. So I just didn't know the, the thinking or rationale that, that's not condoned or not recommended or when you have this big flush of cash, one-time monies and funding recurring needs with one-time money.
Yeah, the, you're right, we will prepare a recommendation for your consideration on a later date, but essentially the, the ARPA funding, we're encouraged to use that for one-time expenditures. This is a once in a generation amount of money that's coming to, to every community across the country, all nineteen thousand of them. So it's really going to be the board's decision if you want to set up recurring funding streams for, for organizations or if you just want to provide one-time support. And the one-time support could be a capital expenditure, a piece of equipment for property or something to that effect, to support a nonprofit. As far as the recurring funding from the organizations we saw this evening, this is the first year we've had this level of requests. And so I've been looking at strategies in the budget to, to put a cap on the amount that we, that I recommend that you authorize for the upcoming budget. And years past, they've been, it's, the requests have been much smaller, so it hasn't really been an issue. But last year during the budget cycle, that was a topic of conversation was, where does it, where does it end? Not to say that that's a negative thing, but just we need to make sure that we're being responsible with taxpayer money. And so I'll, I'll tell you now that one of my recommendations that I'm considering for your, for the upcoming budget discussion is thirty thousand dollars and rep for allocation for nonprofits. And that thirty thousand dollars comes from ABC sales tax revenue that the town receives. We've been receiving that for well over a decade. The, the average for the last ten years though is about thirty-one thousand dollars in revenue, so it's a pretty reliable fixed source of income that I look to for potential funding of nonprofits. That's not to say that that's the only funds that, that I might recommend, but that is a, a starting point, what I was looking at, wanting to recommend to you all.
Thank you, can we talk about this for just a minute? So I appreciate you looking for, for a way to level this thing out and because I think last year, do you remember right off the top of your head what the, well, the town funded nonprofits, you remember?
It was eighteen thousand dollars was what made it into the budget, but then remember that the farm market received funding the night they requested. So in total, excluding partnership as, as well as IHC was approximately twenty-two thousand dollars from the state.
And this year I heard requests for, my math was close to being around about sixty-five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, it's pretty obvious we can't continue down that road, that much of an increase each and every year.
Right.
So any ways that we can find to level it out?
Mm-hmm.
And, and I'm, I'm for, I look forward to reading and seeing what you come up with.
And just for your information, since we kind of were on a topic, the, the budget document will be prepared and delivered to you by the end of next week. And the presentation will be on May twelfth. So you'll have a little bit of time to digest it.
Any other council comments? You're none, need a motion, we move into closed session. And we're going to take Daniel with us this time so he can take notes and we can let the rest of the staff make it home when they get their paperwork put in. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll turn off the lights here.
Yeah. In consideration of qualifications, yeah, performance character, so it's all.
Make motion, we go in closed session for personnel.
Call that number out if you want to.
Lost my. Patty can probably help me out. You got me, Ben, okay.
Okay, and I need a second. Thank you, Jeff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
James, James is up, Sandra, you good? Roll call, Randy, me, Jeff.